There we go. Squirt. Okay. Pardon me? Do you have an answer to that? Um, yeah. Unless you're, probably not. You could just leave it. If I think it's interfering, I'll tell you, okay? Okay. Good evening, everybody.
Good day.
Good evening. Um, welcome to this debate of the Commissioners candidates for District One in the primary elections, for the primary election. My name's Debbie Lowe, some of you know me. And I'm with the Carroll County Comment. In the audience is editor of the Comment, Susan Schulz. And we'll be videoing this tonight, and it'll be on my YouTube channel, probably tomorrow. And that channel is the Debbie Lowe channel on YouTube. So, the purpose of tonight's event is to allow voters to ask permanent questions, and we hope that you do. I'd much rather have you all asking questions than me. Lord knows, I've got a list of them, you know? But it's for you guys to do that. Those in the audience with questions are asked to come down to one of the two microphones sitting on the floor, and they're on now, I turned them on, and speak into the microphone with your questions. You need to say your name when you ask a question, and then go ahead. The first debate is for the county Commissioners District One candidates, and will begin after the candidates are introduced. The second debate is for county sheriff candidates, and that will start at seven tonight. The Comment really wants to thank the Delphi School Corporation for allowing us to be in this venue. This is a really nice venue, for anybody who's been to a debate before. We sometimes run out of seats, and the sound is kinda, you know, kinda funny. So, we really, we really appreciate the use of this auditorium. Candidates chose which would go first, which candidate would go first, and Jack Begley was the first one. And Jack, I want you to go ahead and introduce yourself, and talk a little bit about why you think, why you want to be the county commissioner, okay? And use your mic.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. And yes, I'm Jack Begley. I've been a resident of Carroll County for twenty-four years now. Seems like time has flown. With my wife and daughter. We actually moved out here so that my daughter could go to one school system from start to finish, and we chose Delphi at that time. I've been, pretty much, I spent twenty-five years working in the adaptive equipment, designing buildings, installing for handicapped people, so I've worked with a lot of people. Worked and worked with a lot of different personalities. And so that has led me to here. I mean, I did the leadership of Carroll County in 2014, and that was actually when I first really started getting interested in more in the politics going on in the county. I've ran my own business some, I've been involved in many layers of the businesses where I've worked. And I've kind of, part of the going thing for me is, I feel like there's just some things going on in the county that we need to address and get taken care of. The jail project, four years ago, it was looking like it was going to be moving along, and everybody knows where we're standing right now. So, there's just some issues along there that I, I think that my personality, I can bring the driving, a driving force to hopefully working with the other Commissioners and the Council to get some of these things done for the county. I'm, I'm a numbers person. I mean, I look, I look at the numbers and let the numbers drive a lot of the decisions that I make, and I think some of that needs to be taken into account. I look forward to questions in that, and, you know, go ahead. Like Debbie had said in our little thing, you probably wouldn't use all the time for the opening statement, and I'm that way, so.
Okay. I gave everybody, I gave candidates five minutes to, to start out with, okay? Thank you. Uh, Lauren, you want to go?
Thank you, thank you, Jack. Uh, I'd like to also thank Debbie and Carroll County Comment, Susan, and also the Delphi Community School Corporation for this great facility. Nice to have you, because I guess I'm coming. Uh, I'm Lauren Hilton. I'm sixty-six years old, and then my wife and I celebrated our fortieth anniversary on April third, and I am not going to disclose her age at this time. We have two children, a daughter, Lyndy, and a son, Evan, and we have three grandchildren. I represent District One, which is Washington Township, that's where I live, Liberty Township, Rock Creek Township, Tiffanue Township, and Jefferson Township. I've been, started out in construction, grew up on farms, grew up on farm, and started farming probably around three years old on my knees, and I wore several jeans out doing that, and as I got older, I realized it's smaller. And I started that when I was nineteen, in nineteen seventy-six, invested in that with my father, and I've done that. I've also worked construction for fourteen years. I did back-to-back work. I served on the Township Board back in the eighties. I've been past Commissioner from two thousand three, two thousand ten, and I ran in two thousand eighteen, and served two thousand nineteen to present. I've enjoyed this position. It's very challenging. From the time I had served previously, prior to this, this term, things were altogether different, or different issues in our county. The jail, we're starting the jail, the jail started back around two thousand eight or so, we had a study done, and just an assessment study, where we got what we needed, and the cost, and at that time, that cost, I believe, was around ten million dollars. I don't know about comparing apples with apples today, it was a little bit smaller, but currently, those numbers have risen quite a bit. So, I'd like to continue in that position. I've had a lot of great people to work with in the county. We have a lot of great things going in this county, and I'd like to see it get better. So, I appreciate you all being here, and I appreciate Jack's interest there too, and bringing people on, younger people, and people who, from the outside coming in, who's been here and trying to understand us, so I appreciate that. I've lived here all my life, so my father and mother lived in Carroll County all their lives also, so I just enjoy Carroll County, love Carroll County. But we try and do what's right as Commissioners and Council, but we're not always there. So, thank you for all being here.
Thank you, Lauren. Your question's straight. Uh, the first question's going to go to Jack. And wait a minute, does anybody have a question out here? I just started reading my notes. Yes, come on down to the podium, to the microphone, and state your name, please, and thank you for asking. You can ask anybody.
Speaker, both of them.
Okay.
My name's Richard Voorhees, living outside of Brinkhurst. Never been to a political debate before, but article in the paper a couple of weeks ago caught my eye, and I wanted to ask the question. Want to ask about the practice the county Commissioners have of overriding the decisions of the county engineer when it comes to determining which roads will be chipped and sealed. It appears in a purely objective process by the county engineers overturned by the Commissioners, giving preferential treatment for friends or supporters. The result is that taxpayers who live on bad roads, like me, must wait indefinitely for improvements while the Commissioners' friends have their already excellent roads that may be even better. I'd like to comment about that practice.
Okay, first of all, I'd like to thank you for coming. I know Lauren and I both, I'm sure, I'll speak a little bit to Lauren on this, that both of us appreciate, you know, the new people coming out and asking the questions, because input is what all of us want. The practice of overriding the engineer, I've seen a little bit, I know, just in the past couple of weeks, meeting, two meetings, first meeting, or last meeting in March, the Commissioners did ask that, you know, the engineer look at putting three different roads on chipped and sealed lists, and I know those roads have been discussed multiple times over the last four years even, about the condition. I agree with you on road condition. The road I live on isn't the greatest, and it's, part of that came from when we did four twenty-one in eighteen in our county. But, I don't know if you realize this, but at the last Commissioners' meeting, the engineer presented facts on why he wanted to delay doing those roads, and the Commissioners listened to him, which needs to happen. I mean, the people that work for the county, the Commissioners have to listen to them, take what they have to say into account too. They may not, the Highway Department may not hear some of the input, and until something's said to them, they don't always get there. I prefer to follow the recommendations of the people that know more about the roads than I do, but I also understand that the Commissioners need to give that information to the engineer about complaints, requests, however you want to look at it, coming to them, and I forget, Lauren may know better, I forget how many miles of roads the county is taking care of, and it's a major undertaking, and there's going to be roads that are missed. But I think the decisions, I feel the decisions need to be made based on, like I said, the numbers. What roads are in the worst shape, what roads have the most traffic? Personally, I ought to say this, I question what's been done on Bicycle Bridge Road and eleven fifty from eighteen to Bicycle Bridge Road. And part of that's been done with community crossing funds, so the county's only put a little bit into that, a third into that versus, well, I guess technically twenty-five percent is. We match a third of the funds that the state gives, so. But, you know, so the county's got some input in those, but I've seen those two roads get a lot of work when there's been a lot of other roads in the county that I think needed attention. I, I don't know how all the numbers are gathered, and that's something I'll look into, but I think the numbers need to support what's being done, and I think that needs to come first in figuring the roads out.
Thanks. Lauren, you want to?
Well, yeah, I, I think that where you're talking about Southland, State of River Eighteen, that's really correct. Southland, State of River Eighteen, approved.
Yeah.
That's where you're talking about.
Well, all three of them, you know, got preferential treatment to.
Okay. Well, I, I get several phone calls from my area, people want roads covered in the gravel roads, and I tell them that, you know, and they've told me they didn't call, they're supposed to be on the list. Well, that list might be five years old, you know, when we change engineers out of both. And I always talk to the engineer about it, and I tell him to check it out. I thought, we don't want to get so many roads in the system we can't take care of. And with every season going through the freeze thaw thing, it can be devastating on the roads. So, we have to be careful to keep our improved roads together there, and those that are gravel, that sort of thing, should be probably maintained, brought in slowly, we're going to maintain, maintain them also. Gravel, you can maintain it cheaper. If you have to make damn, you can do it at less cost. So, we have, we have, I think, seven hundred and seventy-some miles or so in our county roads, and a portion of them are paved, which is, they're community crossroads mainly, and then the chipped and sealed, which is a rent-to-coach chipped and sealed, it holds around twenty thousand dollars a mile. So, that adds up pretty quick. So, we need to be careful where you go to, I agree with that, but everybody wants a hard surface road. Now, we've had hard surface roads, or had roads re-improved, and I'll get phone calls about people speeding. And my answer to them is, and I, I quiet them pretty quick, because I'll tell them, I said, "Okay, I'll send the highway crew out, and we'll install some potholes," and that's all we hear. That'll, that'll slow them down, but they won't be happy with potholes.
Well, it doesn't slow them down, because I got potholes and they still fly down the road.
Was your question answered, Mr. Voorhees?
Yeah.
Yeah. Who else has a question? Nobody else? Lisa, you want to ask a question?
Sure, I'll get her on.
I think it's a great way to hear about the jail.
Me.
Oh, Lisa who?
Deanna.
Thank you.
And who are you asking your question of first?
Well, I think it really probably goes more and more, and you guys have spent a lot of money, and I think about the jail.
I'm sure, thanks, Lauren.
Yeah, the Commissioners have spent a significant amount of money, and I've been upfront, I don't know how you paid or anything, but I do want to know, where has the money gone? Do you feel you guys have been good stewards?
Where's the money gone?
That you've spent thus far without a plan.
From the plan?
You don't have a plan, is my understanding.
We, we have a plan, the plan has to be adjusted, to, to the money that we can spend. Now, with, with our money, from the government, that could be.
I'm talking about what you already spent as Commissioners for the new jail.
I'm sorry?
You spent a lot of money, I believe it was CCI, wasn't it? You spent a lot of time with them.
You say you spent a lot of money, you haven't seen, that's what you're saying. Yeah.
Yeah. I want to know where you spent it, do you regret spending it, what's the plan going forward? It's a lot of money that you spent.
I understand that, and hopefully we'll get to, to a, a conclusion here, we can take an action and start to warm up with someone, but things have changed. That estimate that was given, the build out of fourteen point five million, back about two years ago, by the request of the Council, went to bid, and it come in around eighteen, seventeen and a half, eighteen million. And that is, and that includes the soft costs, I believe. So, the soft cost is usually about fifteen percent of the project. So, some's got to be trimmed off. Things have changed since that bid was submitted too. And that bid, I was kind of disappointed in those who participated in the bid process. I thought that we'd have more locals, but we had one local, and the difference between that local and an outside bid was substantial. There's several jails being built at this time, and seems to be just a highlight, because the numbers are going up. If you look around, what's, what's going to come this way? If you look at what's coming into this country, and what our federal government's doing, I think we should prepare. I want to keep the people of Carroll County safe, and our job as Commissioner, Commissioners is to provide the jail assembly. It's, we're responsible for county property.
I agree with that. You were serving.
I, I brought this, we brought this attention prior to two thousand four, I left office, and he did, he was coming, and a committee was formed before I came on, and things were selected, recommended by the committee to take the direction we took.
But it didn't advance.
It never, it paralyzed, I mean, partially paralyzed, but we found out that, yeah, it's above our budget.
How, going forward, I mean, because I've been to many of the meetings, and we, if I remember correctly, the staff would almost double to maintain the jail, if you build.
I don't, that's true.
That was the, yeah, no.
I don't.
Based on what, the last conversation that I read that, Tug did say the staff would double from his initial build, because he didn't think he was going to need as much staff, and it will essentially double. I just don't understand where you're going to be able to pay for the staff, the equipment. You know, bigger jail, there's bigger utilities, more staff, more training, more insurance, more, 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 and the population just simply is not growing.
The, uh, the staffing of the jail, or the way the jail is built, that that makes a lot of the staff, doesn't happen.
But we don't have a plan yet, correct?
To staff the jail?
We don't have a plan, a blueprint for the jail.
No, we have, we have drawings, and we have drawings that have been altered, and we have, those drawings will probably be altered with the jail. Now, our, our jail, our current jail, we're a rest park jail, we're, we are, we could be, uh.
We've heard that argument that we could be.
We could, we could be lost.
A lawsuit, right.
Get us hurt, we could, we could be lost.
But it really shows lack of maintenance, in my opinion, from the Commissioners. The current jail was built at the same time as St. E.
With what?
At the same time as the nursing home. They're the same age, they're both twenty-four seven.
The jail has a little different specifications than most.
Well, it is, but it does show lack of maintenance. We've had the morgue, you've had the morgue car mold, you know, there really has been some neglect in my opinion.
You don't maintain the jail of current, excuse me, you don't maintain a jail with Home Depot, big box store.
Well, of course not, but that still does negate, the Commissioners are responsible for county assets. So, I guess my question is, you can build a new one, but what assurances do we as taxpayers have that you're going to maintain it better than what we've currently maintained county assets?
I understand the question, I understand the question. Well, if you buy a new vehicle today, you drive it five years, are you going to maintain the same way all the way through?
That's mine, you're taking out.
I understand that, I understand. And our, 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 we have to do that, but when a building is more than forty years old, and you can't get repaired for it, you can't get those plumbing fixtures, talk to electricians that's been working on it, he tells me, that's a dangerous situation.
The question, are you going to maintain a new one better than you did the old? Is ultimately the question.
Well, I think we should take pride in our properties, and I think we should maintain, yes, but that does, that does take, for us to do that, but also, so we need the Council backing when we request for repair.
Okay, let's give Jack an opportunity to talk about this.
Okay, well, I'd like to, first, I'll tell you, I agree with you from the standpoint of, I've never been one that says, "Yeah, I want to see us go out and build a jail," but I also understand that we don't have any choice, we have to do something. You were asking about the, if I understood your first question, you were asking about the funds that have been spent already on the jail. Those funds have gone to architect, his fees, it's gone to preparing that bid package, it's gone to work on securing the easement to get the utilities out to the site that's been chosen for the new jail, it's gone to a study to decide what was the best location to do the, do jail. So, and that's, Lauren mentioned soft costs, that's part of what is considered soft costs going in, I mean, those are things. On what's happening, your last part touched on something that kind of rubbed me a little bit wrong, and that's, I don't see any type of a comprehensive plan for maintenance, not just of the jail, but of the courthouse, of the highway garage, any place that is the responsibility of the Commissioners. I really believe that we need a comprehensive plan that says, "Okay, the roof on the courthouse should have an expected life of, let's say, thirty years," so that needs to be planned into future costs, and working with the Council, building funds. You know, it's, they're talking about, and I understand the need for more office space, more looking at Tribute Center, looking at buying that, I know it's in the process of being, waiting on the creative for last I do. But, and the idea of doing that sounds good to me, but I also want to know, how much is it going to cost us to maintain that facility? Do the improvements that are going to be needed to start you? And it, for me, it keeps coming back to numbers. And this whole thing with the jail, and the way things have gone the last four years, COVID didn't help, COVID exclude, we did not help. But there was also some conflict between the Council and the Commissioners, part of being that the Commissioners were following the recommendations of the Study Committee, that's where the architect that was chosen came from, that's where the general contractor, construction manager, they were looking at doing, his name came from there, because that committee recommended it, Commissioners were confident, felt good about it. The Council didn't like the method that, and I'm not going to say the whole Council, there were members of the Council that didn't like the method of construction that had been chosen, and that then led to a lot of the conflict, and I remember a number being pushed around three years ago, that for every month that the jail project was delayed, was costing the county eighty-four thousand dollars, that expected increases in costs, delays and everything. And it's something that has to be gotten on top of, and we have to be moving ahead, because if, hopefully, God willing, we don't have to face it, but if the county faces a lawsuit and loses over the jail, very probable that a federal judge is going to tell the county what they're building. And if that happens, the county doesn't have any choice, they have to build it, and if, if the judge says you need to build a two-hundred-million-dollar jail, they don't care that, you know, we've got twenty thousand residents in the county, so, anyway.
Okay, thank you.
I'm getting the signal here, so.
Yeah, we have more questions. Uh, I would like to ask, first, Lauren, why is there no time clock in the courthouse? Why do employees do not, why do employees do not punch a time clock?
It is kind of, supervisor is supposed to monitor, you know. It's supervisor, we're supposed to, the signs are off when time, time, I'm turning down, but in my experience, the time clock is people rush in the door, punch that time clock, and then when it comes time to leave, they'll be lined up at the time clock. So, unless you put one in each department, we'll keep them in that department.
And Jack, how do you feel about a time clock in the courthouse?
I, I agree with Lauren's comment about. I, I agree with Lauren's comment about people with time clocks. Over the years, I've seen it, yeah. 7:59 clocking in, 4 o'clock or whatever quitting time is, there's a line sitting there and they've been there for 10 minutes.
So you don't, you don't think there should be time clocks?
My thought is, everybody has computers in their offices now. And just like whether it's St. E., whether it's, or Franciscan, I should say, or IU Health, or NED, or about anybody else, they all have a timekeeping software where the individual comes to work, they log into their computer, they go into the timekeeping software and they clock in. They clock out when they go to lunch, they clock back in when they come back from lunch, clock out at the evening. So that would be a way of doing it without having, you know, the actual time card there that you're doing. But it could help for tracking time. Also, if we come back with remote, working remotely, it gives the time, the ability for that time to be logged out, so.
Kind of on the heels of this, Jack, would you be in favor of mandatory drug testing for employees? I think they have it at the highway department.
Well, they have it in the CDO.
Yeah, but how about, how about everybody else? What do you think?
I would object to mandatory, a random drug testing.
Random, yeah.
A random program. I'm not sure what the cost is of it, but I'm sure, you know, it's not as much. But drugs, and I'm not saying I think there's a big problem in the county, but as far as county employees. But it's something good just to get that reassurance. And in case we do have anybody that wants to play with it, if they never know when they're going to get tested, because I know a lot of the things will hang around in their bloodstream for a while, so.
Lauren, how do you feel about that? Sorry, Jack.
Well, I, I'm not against it. I think it's necessary, we need to be looking into that. Like I said, the county highway does it in random way. I don't see, I don't know if there is a problem, but that problem is outside of here, it's all around us. And the people that you would never know or think about are doing things that we can't imagine. So I'm not against that, I don't think there's many issues with your courthouse and in any department, but hasn't been highway in a few times. But overall, I'm not against that by far, but there is cost to it.
Thank you. Who else has a question? Anybody? Okay, I'm going forward. This, the first ones, or the first person is, is Lauren for this. Taxpayers pay for various board, and this was sent to me. Taxpayers pay for various board committees such as EDC, RDC, APC, you know, all the numbers, all the letters. Twin Lake Sewer District Advisor Boards, et cetera. Why are those people never heard from at commissioners' meetings? Why don't you?
Request a report from them.
Yeah, why, why, why do you not ask for those reports? Have you asked for them?
We get reports from about all the departments, but we don't get them all from any of those people. Actually going to St. Twin Lake Sewer District, I don't remember receiving any of that from them. So, yeah, that's a good, that's a good question. Probably should be requested.
Would you want to change that? Would you want those reports? Would you tell them to?
It'd be interesting, yeah.
Give the reports, I mean, you are a commissioner.
It's public, I'm sure it's public, but we don't receive it.
Oh, absolutely, it's public, yeah.
We don't give it to newspaper or, so we don't have that, that, you know, mind.
Jack, do you think those people should be reporting?
I'll say, as a person who's sitting as a commissioners representative on at least one committee right now, and I've been on one other one, I think asking the people to send something to the commissioners. I try and attend all the meetings, so if the commissioners had a question, I'm there to answer it. But I would be in favor of, in a part of vetting somebody to come, you know, saying, we would like to hear what's going on. I agree with Lauren, I mean, if he's not hearing about the Twin Lake Sewer District, I'd love to hear more about what's going on because at one point, I know they were talking about wanting to include where I'm at. So I'd like to know more of what's going on with them. And I think asking the person that's representing the commissioners to just keep the commissioners informed, to share the information, I think that would be a good thing. I'll say that along the line, so it is hard to get people to volunteer to do a lot of this stuff. That's why you see and hear a lot of the same people serving on a lot of these different committees because it's hard to get the people to be willing to put the time in. And we need, I mean, I'm not that much younger than Lauren, I, he's got a few years on me, but not much. And I know the 4H, extension, all this. Getting younger people to volunteer their time, to be active in something is hard to do. And it, it takes a lot, but I still think that if they're going to do it, they need to keep the information flowing.
On that same note, shouldn't we recite, see something in terms, since they're going to be in the base, shouldn't we be receiving something from the school systems also?
Do you appoint anybody to the school system?
No, we don't appoint anyone, but. That's a good point.
I mean, the question was about those.
For our information.
The, the question was about, who do you appoint, and that's kind of.
Yeah, I understand.
Okay. County website. You want to comment on that, Jack? I mean, I'm not going to lead you into anything, but.
Okay, county website. For those, if anybody doesn't know, yes, the county does have a website, I believe. That is the official webmaster for the county. But I would like to see more effort put into that. To give you an example, if you go there and look, there's minutes from commissioners and council meetings. But I think the newest one is from 2016 or 2017. And it would be nice to see those on there. Truthfully, I would love to see when the agenda for an upcoming commissioners meeting or council meeting or whatever, I would love to see that on the website so that anybody that wanted to could see that and say, oh, oh, they're planning on talking about this. Well, I want to be there so I can get my input. I think it can be used a lot more than it is.
The person who wrote this in wants to know if you would make that happen as a county commissioner, if you were elected, would you make, would you commit to making the website up to date so that people know what's going on?
I would commit to doing everything I could to get it done. I don't know if it would take a directive from all three commissioners to do it, which is what I think we would probably want to do. But I, yeah, I think that's probably, I think that website is the way most people, a lot of the younger people at least, get the information. And it needs to be something that is useful, has current calendar events that says, instead of just saying commissioners' meetings are first and third Mondays of the month, council is the third Thursday of the month. Instead of just saying that, actually being, saying, you know, almost like a little blurb in the comment for those that, you know, what's upcoming. Have a little calendar like that, I think would be good on the website, and it needs to happen.
The person who wrote this to us really wants Lauren to explain why the commissioners have failed to keep the website going and keep the electorate informed.
Well, it takes, it takes manpower to do that, and I know Beth has done her part, and if we had to, she, she probably can't. She's, she's got to throw her hands full now. So it's going to take somebody actually committed to do that, I believe, to do, and keep it updated and do it right. And the agenda, you can get on a list, and she'll send copies of the agenda email directly to you. And usually, I get them usually on Thursday, sometimes on Saturday, so. But getting that on there, and I'm not a tech guy, and it would take somebody to spend more time to do that. So you'd have to enlist somebody, which might take some actual help, yeah. Not against it whatsoever, because I know people are using that, and if we get the, the updated internet fiber optics, then, and younger people, yeah, I understand that.
Okay. The next question is, whatever happened to courthouse security? Lauren, do you want to take that one?
Uh, yeah, we don't have any.
You've been around.
If you're under, and when you come in, just leave your guy in your vehicle, that's all we ask. So, we don't have courthouse security, and that is an important issue, then brought up a few times. There again, it takes somebody to manage, and we have three doors of the courthouse. We have a handicap ramp on one door. So it would take probably one to two people, maybe some part-time people, to make that happen with the light harness dungeon.
And the question would be, why haven't the, do the commissioners?
It's been mentioned, it's been mentioned a lot lately.
Do you not think it's, do you not think it's important enough to act on, or?
Well, it's got to be funded to, 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 and it's going to take the equipment, so it can do that. And of course, it'd be a big use of that security.
Jack, what's, what's, what's your response to that?
I agree with the need for the security, but I also understand that the cost of, you know, we're looking at, you know, do we restrict it down to one entrance that the employees can come through and one that Joe Public comes through? And then, you know, so, because that would affect costs. And the cost is going to be the biggest, the biggest issue. And the commissioners can try and do everything they want, but if they can't get the support of the council, and that's what it would take, is the commissioners and the council sitting down and dedicating the funds to doing it.
We get very fortunate, our county has bodies on to have, but I, that's, it's one thing that's always worried me. Like when you enter courthouse, they have security. How good it is, I don't know, but it's there, you have to aim to your pockets. But even, I believe the employees ought to be screened too, just to be on the safety side.
Who else has questions? Coming down, please, is that Melinda? I'm older than Lauren, so kind of, you know, the eyes are kind of going, you know, just going.
Melinda Ross, Southern County Treasurer. Hi, guys. I guess I'd like to first ask Lauren, how do you feel about the fact that we don't have an HR director for Carroll County? And are you aware of the effects, the ill effects that that has on your county employees?
You might want to say what you do at the courthouse.
County Treasurer, I did say that, I believe.
I'm sorry.
Did you say HR person?
An HR director.
HR director.
Yes.
Well.
I mean, other than being part of the auditor's job, which you yourself just said the auditor doesn't have enough time. And I personally feel that that's, really shouldn't fall under the auditor. I know it does by default since we don't have an HR director. But I think you're aware that I've pushed for an HR director for the past four, five years since I've been in the courthouse.
It would be good to have somebody in a position to really do that solely for that. I, I disagree with that, there's so many issues that come up, hand them up, and sometimes they don't go to that person that who's there now. They try to get handled differently, and that's not right either. That would take another position, possibly a full-time position with office space. So there again, I mean, that takes funding from the council and things like that more.
What would you do, Jack?
I agree that an HR director is needed. I don't know if it needs to be a full-time position or a part-time position or, you know, freeing up. I know what is it, the first deputy or second deputy that's the HR person. First guy knew it before, I hope it been the auditor's office. But, you know, that's something, again, I mean, Lauren and I both know that a lot of this stuff takes money. But we have to keep the employees happy. We can't, as a county, it's hard for us to compete on wages. So we need to make sure we're at least competing on keeping the employees happy with things other than the wages. And I think the HR director would be good. It seems to matter getting it through the council. And there again, if everything would work out that we can do it, I, part-time director, you know, somebody could be sharing a couple of responsibilities. That goes back to the idea of the timekeeping software. That could relieve some of the other stuff that an HR person is dealing with to get payroll ready. And be able to spend more time with dealing, because she deals with the healthcare too right now. And healthcare is another big issue that is trying to keep the employees happy. So we, we need to do everything we can. And if it takes pushing for a full-time person, that's what we need to do.
Well, the Human Resources Director is much more than keeping the employees happy. And an HR director could help with the hiring, which we have a lot of problems right now with, with hiring and where you can't find people, but they help with recruitment and things like that. And they help with the insurance, our, most people probably are aware that our health insurance is a program, which is very, it's a, the county is saving hundreds of thousands of dollars with a program that doesn't have contracts with facilities. And that leaves a gap when hospital bills and so forth, a balance bill and the process that is used to negotiate those balance bills. But we don't have an HR director, anyone to facilitate or administrate that program. So that's a big issue with a lot of employees, they don't understand how it works. Therefore, they go without healthcare, or they end up paying towards balance bills when they really shouldn't. And as well as, I've heard three issues tonight, time clock, the, a few other, a couple, a couple other questions. I think an HR director could help with those issues. So it's more than just keeping employees happy and dealing with problems, so.
But it, yeah, they also have to facilitate, especially with our, with the healthcare system the county has. You know, they need, there's somebody that needs to be able to dedicate the time. But the other part of that is if the employee doesn't know to contact that person to get help. And I don't know if they do, but just from my view, from sitting in the back of the commissioners' meetings and what I've seen, it sounds like the employee, when they do get together with that person, is doing it way down the road instead of when those issues are first starting to pop up.
And that's because we don't have an HR director who helps communicate. You know, they close the gap, or they are, they are the person that communicates with employees between commissioners, between the auditor's office, or between, an HR director is, is responsible for communication. And that's where we have some shortfalls right now.
Boy, we have a lot of shortfalls, but the position is, at that position, what type of person we get to that position with what we pay. If they're worth the weight, they're probably. If they're worth the weight, they're probably going to be somewhere surrounding us in other counties. That's what, that's what we face.
Well, you could say that about a lot of positions, Lauren. I mean, I could, I could go to Lafayette and make twice as much as what I'm earning. So, I mean, there are some local people who have skills and experience who would be willing to work for lesser wage than, than driving.
I, I understand, I'm grateful for, for those people. I mean, I'm a resident of Carroll County, and that's, that's where I want to focus on.
Well, I don't think you should.
This is home, though, and they, they want to do something.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, thanks. Okay, so anybody else have a, Angie? I was just about to announce the record. Did you stuck that in?
I'm Angie Brown. Um, I used to work for the county health department. I currently do not. Years ago, the county council made it so that the commissioners could not, um, be a part of the county insurance. And I, I've always kind of felt like, um, because they weren't a part of the county insurance, they never really understood exactly how good or how bad it was in certain areas. Do you feel, and I guess I'm asking both of you, that it's important that you guys be offered the insurance too so that you can judge if it is good for the county employees or not?
Lauren, you want to go ahead and take that?
Well, yeah, we'd like to provide insurance for everybody to service from Canada. But, uh, that is a hard one. I mean, there again, we have to deal with the council, uh, not pay a lot of money on the council, but insurance has changed over the years, and it's changed over the years. And I, with the semi, the federal program, it's probably changed for those folks too. But, yeah, it is an issue, it's, it's, it becomes more of an issue over the years, it's like, and as we get older, you know, you want good healthcare.
So the question was, should the, the commissioners be part of the county insurance? Isn't that the question?
Oh, commissioners, yeah.
Should it be offered?
Yeah, and the council also, yeah. Well, we were a long time ago. And, uh, when I come in back then, I had, I was self-insured, being on farm. And then they offered me the insurance, I took it. And then, uh, I dropped mine, so it's no need to be double covered. I paid for my wife, and then, uh, I found I, I have problems. It's going to happen, I have a diabetic. And, uh, but then they took it away. So then I was uninsured, and I had to go through the state, and I was paying a thousand dollars for a five-thousand, five-thousand-dollar medical program. I had to pay a thousand dollars a month. So it's, health insurance is very important. There's things to look out that I, we found. Of course, now Medicare, which I didn't, total solution.